He was called on, he was totally fine.
Maybe this is his third time.
Well, that's all, I'll tell myself that. I was talking to them about a loss of a class line I had.
The guy in front of me was one of your, used to update Wikipedia pages in front of me. He was like, always like in there, you know, you can go in and like.
Changing, oh my.
Not legal ones, like very other stuff, but that's what he was.
Bono's by our.
The only good thing though is that in some of those one L classes, if you get stuck, people would like message you things either just like.
Oh, yeah.
That was a good thing about technology in those.
I need you to say more about what kind of was the P A P is he updated?
I don't even remember. I remember once it was like a Star Wars related.
I have to break this down to my notebook.
I just feel like sometimes you're like, oh, that is a character.
Like.
He definitely was all around.
Right? Like what a person who's in love, paying money for law school and updating.
I think he's one of these people though, who was like super smart.
Okay.
And so he like would have been fine. Plus the class we were in, the professor would tell us at the beginning of the class who was up to be called on. So he knew going into the class whether or not he's going to get called on.
Well, I suppose that.
So like, once the class started, he knew whether or not he'd be get called on. So he like.
I also love the idea of people who are so intent on things being correct about something that they go and update public information sites about.
But I mean, obviously that's the only way that Wikipedia works, right?
It's true. It's like a psychological profile of a human.
It sounds like it has never occurred to me.
Nor I, about things I really care about. I'm like, oh, I think that's wrong, but I don't.
And I'm, you know, a pretty nerdy person and like it still would never occur to me.
That's what I was asking.
Hi there. You guys were in that deep conversation about.
Uh, in my head, it's Doug. I don't know, just it is.
I don't even know where I would begin. I'm not even sure where I would begin to figure it out.
I don't know either.
I could ask some of my lost classmates better memories, probably they might remember.
Was the original Star Wars episode four nineteen seventy seven.
Oh.
That was their first date.
That's true.
I love that. I love whenever I watch those movies thinking of them.
Yeah.
Okay. So then is that there? I just said, no, he was sitting on in my, oh, what do you, the hard cap?
Oh, yes. A friend of mine runs the Boulder Comedy Festival. Can I put this on the community, put these on the community board up front?
Can you or?
I can.
You were, you did a show.
I did do a show. I did a little baby show my year of yes.
It was great.
It was like, um, it was down in Denver at a comedy club. You know, it was this sort of the student showcase. So. No.
Never see it again. But it's special.
You may see it again. It's probably for the best. I want to play with it. No, no, no. West Village.
The authority granted by the gavel.
No. I'm actually seem so silly. Oh, boy.
So when, when I hit ninety minutes, do I need to then go in and? I went up.
Yeah. Okay. It'll just cost.
Yeah, it all looks like. A permit that we could put in our windows?
Yes.
So.
I counted.
Could we just plan on that for the future?
Yeah.
In some way.
Right, right. Yeah, I do have to pay for twenty three.
Right.
Today.
Yeah. We started at four, so it's like five thirty ish. But I hope to do that.
I have some. Back when the city. We all.
Turn it around like that.
On my desk when I give them out all the time and now I counted them after the last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Get some work.
What can we add to our budget? For those. But I remember attending an event once and it was just a like a piece of paper that you put on your dashboard.
We used to do that. We don't.
Can't do that anymore.
So it's a city.
Okay.
It's good for updates. You don't need that anymore.
Well, shall we begin? She would listen. Hey, don't you made it.
It's so bad. We're putting you through this.
Relayed for another day.
Oh, that's so late.
Okay, while we were recording, you know, just clip all of that up and we start the meeting.
Good. Hey, we're ready. Okay, um, we call the quarter. Six of us here, so it looks like we have four. Did put time on this agenda for public comment. Here in person. Is there anyone on chat? Okay. And update on Google.
Sent out a memo this afternoon regarding the P A numbers and bank account. And I didn't know whether to send it to the whole board or are you wanting to do that? But I did send it forward for you. For your own records if you want. Pretty soon here we'll have to. Someone keep the different records and then we'll stop distributing in so badly because otherwise it's going to be a struggle. Um, the other thing is I had about five or six conversations with David here on the other ninety eight. Very smoothly. We seem to be in sync later. Hopefully we're going to work on that tomorrow for a couple hours and see.
That's great. And that's true. Contract with David is.
I'm sorry, can you send the memo to all of us?
I did not receive.
I didn't either.
Didn't have it sitting in front of me, but I.
Yeah.
I didn't get it emailed.
Yeah, I didn't get it by email. Okay, okay, fair enough. Okay, no, great. Just wanted to check.
So everybody knows Sylvia has stepped in, always got her baby count set up. And right now. Table to try to use the financial policy. And then one other thing is to catch everyone. I might do it. Yeah, I G O with county. Vote up front. Look out the extent. Statutes. This internal. But the county does. Early on. Okay, um, what would you like, great budget? This department.
Yeah, that would be me. So I'm going to try to keep this at whatever altitude you like, thirty thousand, forty thousand. Um, the main message really is to kind of reassure you that the money good, we can make library, the balance process is all fine. And the other part is to help you realize that we are, I have, we have been digging into it early in the past six years. And so look, the cost of a lot of these things, we revised it when the ballot initiative actually went forward. So everything is, you know, mostly pretty up to date. So there essentially I'm going to do a handout tonight too, but you, we sent your packet essentially three documents. So this one, which you have in your packet is the city above Boulders library budget for twenty twenty three, which was approved. And obviously it has a lot of but it's as simple a version as we have. For the public. So anybody who don't want to pull this out. And I think the thing that's probably most obvious about it is it's, this is not a tip, right? So this is really a very typical budget for what we have currently, including the capital expense of one point two million dollars and the internal service. So what this budget doesn't show is the internal service. So if you have followed along through the debate for the last two or three years, that's been a topic of some debate, right? So if you look at the amount that's budgeted from open guide, rough budget for the library that's received by the public, it's about thirteen. There is on top of that, there is an internal cost of running. The city, it doesn't, it shows up in various parts of the budget, but unless you know what you're looking for, you're not going to find. The city estimates that, so that's the cost for facilities maintenance, for I T stuff, for H R, for payroll, for lawyers, for all the different things that are distributed at various points in different departments budgets, not in the library's budget as it's in the city manager's approved budget. Um, but they are all costs, just indirect ones in the way in which the city library. In the district budget, it will obviously show up as a direct. It's made up taxpayers have always been. The, the a three point foot four million dollars, you may debate whether or not they spent that last year or the year before, but it is not a bad rough estimate of the cost of the internal services that we do have. We benchmarked that in the course of this discussions over the last six years with, I think, six other libraries. And although the percentages of the money that they put into various services varies slightly from what Boulders are. It's not wild. In most cases, it's pretty spot on. Where our costs, we'll get into that later, but where our costs are high in comparison to almost every other library state is around buildings, building maintenance. And that's simply because the age of our buildings is definitely older than most other libraries. So if you add the thirteen million that's in this piece, plus let's say three million dollars for internal cost allocation, three point five million dollars, we're in that sixteen, sixteen and a half million dollars of current taxpayer money goes to. Next year, this year, the district revenue is. Next year, we don't know for certain, but we estimate the city is currently operating with a double digit increases. You've all gotten your property tax bills, which are I guess are double digits, but being double digits, we don't anticipate that like minus thirty nine percent. I don't expect, we're not doing any modeling that shows thirty percent increase, twenty percent increase. The current modeling that we're using, I'm using is around ten percent. The city is using. So.
So the city only, alright, they only get eleven percent of.
Yeah, it represents about eleven percent. So they nevertheless need to do calculations this year. So by current calculations, we anticipate the revenue twenty twenty four. So from January to December will be literally about ninety. So happy to take any questions. So then I'd like to direct your attention to this document.
So can I just mention something there? The same ticket item is shown on this budget is dealing backlog. Because that is not in the cost allocation and that's not.
Yeah, I'll pass that a budget at the end where we've been. But it's, um. There is no, there are no issues with. Still this thing for success needs to be tired ten years back to you. We've at various times spent some money on trying to address that leak. It doesn't change. It's like a, it's a feature. Been a problem to staff. So then the second list, and I, this list is the second document in the bag. It's really, it's a, it's a little bit out of date. So it's done in twenty twenty two, but it's a comprehensive list of a lot of the items, of the items that are in the master, the twenty eighteen. Uh, it goes through each one and details, I, I think it's, it's a great document just for you to sink your eyes into and read and digest because it has the details of what the plan hopes to achieve. And also, um, I think for this conversation, and I, I know it's so great. You'll, you'll look at it and you'll see that almost everything in here is unfunded, has been currently unfunded. That has been the case uh, really since the master plan was completed, there has not been funding. Uh, with the exception of two programs which we have gotten going in either a pilot format or in a way of scrambling. You'll notice that most of the items and it's, gosh, four pages in my document, um, things, most of which will show that they're not funded. We're, I'm happy to talk about any of those things as well. I probably prefer us to get into that detail, but just so you know that the, you know, current revenue is about seventeen, current costs are about sixteen. There's a laundry list of things we have to do, many of which we have not even gone to bid. We have, we don't know precisely. So.
This year's revenue, our budget money for the city include the North Boulder Bridge. They already budgeted.
It, it, it's folded in, but it, with the way in which that money was preordained for the Boulder library. So in the complexity of, of, of our, our math, the city, they already committed to a million dollars in operational costs.
Right.
They put that money in the budget. It's actually somewhat split between an anticipation of some need for operations and some need for capital. So a lot of the things that are that are required for completing the building, for instance, running the pipe from the box to the building. A lot of different costs getting plumbing into the maker space. Those costs were not factored in. So we're using a part of that one million dollar allocation for some things that could be.
Can I type that in different ways? See if this is what you get. So this budget shows six hundred thousand dollars. So there's about four hundred thousand dollars more.
Okay, so but it's in the budget.
Yeah, that is part of that sixteen million dollars. Yeah, no, those, no, those factors in.
I thought so.
Just for the record, to mention that the master plan document, David, turning to something.
I have a quick question just about the the big document with color coding. Is there, should we prioritize like colors versus X's in the columns? I just noticed like in some cases yellow means. Just meaning that some have a focus in the columns and some.
That'll be up to you. So that's, that's a.
Okay.
That's a vice city. Maintain services, expansion services. So your ballot, which essentially adopted the you put in there, it's things that are part of the expansion.
Okay.
Those are all part of the.
I guess I mean like, some of them, they're coded like twice. They're coded in columns with X's and they're coded, color coded. Is there any? Like one or the other?
Well, the color coding is only intended to go back to the top column where it says maintain service levels. And so the yellow.
But then then they're like, aren't any X's? I'm sorry to ask a really stupid, but I just tried to read this. That there's some X's in that column.
Yes.
So is it like, is that an X because it maintains service level? Versus like.
The X is that it's not. So we are, we update this with some frequency, not, I mean, the next scheduled update from staff is not. This coming month, June, and they'll be presenting to you a more updated version. A similar documents in July as we move towards potentially adopting.
Okay.
Yeah, the color coding is mostly lost on me, but you should ask if you see color coding in documents a lot of times. It's, it can be complex and has no meaning or. I don't use color.
Okay, I, I do. And so I was trying to figure out if I should use that or not.
So library staff do a lot of color coding and I think mostly it's a device that actually does have an indication, but.
Okay.
So putting that there, the third document that I really want to kind of dive into. Some estimated draft estimated cost around range about some of the things. And you know, to acknowledge the first couple of meetings where I, I, I watched all your meetings. So I know, like some of you mentioned, like we need to, we need to get Carnegie back over. I think we need to do the gun barrel library. You know, I would like to see ours or store. Very similar, a lot of different things that we want to do. And so from a, from a simply from an operational point of view and from financing view, you will be ultimately in the driver's seat in terms of prioritizing one of those things happens first. But but we can't do them all at once. So there's a, there's kind of a, I hate saying no. So when things come up like candy, just restore hours, you know, I'd love to say, yes, we could just restore hours. But if you flip to the list, like the estimated operating cost or some of the few it's seven thousand, one point two million dollars annually, we're actually doing. So when do we, should we do it? Do we scale it up? Partially, how do we best go approach some of these things? Because there are a number of vacant positions that were vacated as part of the pandemic cuts that we, we saw at the library that we never got back. There are some other positions that came about in the budget for twenty twenty three. For instance, they funded Boulder Reads fully again. Then they funded a new outreach position. That's all awesome. Uh, but it doesn't match the Carnegie still sits without a manager and some of the paid staff are gone. The same is true, resource services store, they don't have a manager anymore. Reduced in size. Um, so there's a lot of things that we will need to make decisions about. We can say, let's restore funding and restore all the hours, uh, services we have. That may be something. So from an overall perspective though, I think it's, right? So if you total up all of the things that are on this list from from an operational perspective, and those are both the things that are required of us as a district, i.e. administrative services, I T infrastructure staffing, marketing, communications, having a mutual reserve fund, hiring legal services. All of these things combined with almost all of the things that are in the master plan and documents that have costs associated with them. They come in at around three million bucks, right? So it's again, you can get to that point. So let's say three or four million dollars in that range by restoring all of the internal services. Have to stand up as a library district to supplement what the city had previously provided as a, not a direct cost to the library, plus most of all the things promised in the ballot, which the, the things identified in the master plan support entity. Not entirely, but it's good from an operational perspective, like you can bring in people, you can restore the hours, you can open up gun barrel, you can do all these things. What's missing really is the capital. Capital costs, um, of all the things in this list is probably somewhere in the vicinity of close to ten, ten to twelve. So you're not going to have ten, twelve million dollars in your bank account maybe soon in order to do all of the things you want. So if the goal is to activate, for instance, the Canyon Theater, you can hire a couple of technicians, open up the theater for more access to the public, which is described in the master plan as a pilot program to test community staff. We're not making a long term commitment. We're not devising a capital plan to renovate this building. We are merely hiring public staff members to test the idea. Probably hired on a contract for a year, two. If the idea works, then we may be coming back to you in twenty twenty six or something like that and say, if that's one of your priorities is to act with Canyon Theater, then to, how are we going to save the one million or more dollars in capital expenses in order to upgrade theaters if it's conducive to people with all kind, all abilities, all the least of hearing, those kind of. So that is a, um, I think it's within the wheelhouse, but and I think all the things in the master plan are important to the community. We did a great deal of research on those things. They, they, for the board of trustees, for you who are going to be making the financial decisions, we're going to have to get, uh, we're going to have to scrutinize each of the things pretty carefully decide to decide what fits into the overall. Now, capital investment is further gawked at, which we have talked briefly about. It's the facilities back. So if you fold the facilities backlog into the capital programs, what was a ten to maybe fifteen million dollars capital cost to do all of the things in your master plan, aside from the unsexy stuff about fixing buildings, you double that. So the capital cost, if we're trying to do everything once, like, we can't do everything. It's just we're truly from a capacity review. But if the backlog is folded in, you've just doubled that number. So that will become an important discussion for you as we go through budget process, as I assume you talk in the I G A. The, the facilities backlog is is significant. They're all incremental costs. There's no, like fixed the building. It's a, you know, it's a, the fire alarms, it's the, you know, the solar lights, it's the way the windows are constructed. All of these things come back, but when you add all of those things together, you come up with quite a big price to try to address it. So you know, that is one of the things when we're talking about priorities, obviously it makes a lot of sense to restore hours, makes a lot of sense to open the gun barrel branch, it's a lot of sense to activate Canyon Theater. But you have to make decisions based upon what you have and where you want your capital investment to go. Because the capital investment is one of the ones that we know the least about. We, you know, we typically in a city year, on average, we put probably a million dollars in the capital each year as an average. Obviously, no, that number spiked quite a bit. But we need more than to both address the backlog and please some of the to open again to.
If for our education, maybe my education, if you delineate the difference between capitals, what like what will you lose to capital?
Yeah, so the city is, that, that, that's a good. And I, I don't have a precise definition. So the city has considered capital investment, what will be allowable in terms of the ex size tax use. So we have separate things which, which has caused us to you know, furniture doesn't count. I T equipment above a certain value does count as capital. Books definitely count as capital investment. Even pre- depreciation time, you're, you'd probably be disturbed by the depreciation down on books, but nevertheless, capital is, is mostly building expenses, but there are some elements that.
The software.
Software we do not.
But like. You renovate a bathroom that's capital.
Yes.
And if you fix the roof, that's capital.
It's.
So it's physical, it's usually just physical. Physical, it's usually just physical assets, right?
Sometimes leases over a year or leases over a year capital spend or. At least, like, releasing a building. At a capital expense or.
Uh, you know, I don't know. So all we pay, so our leases that we currently, that's a good question, nobo is a dollar a year. Right, look, and and those. We pay in the nobo. Basically, well, is. Common area maintenance charges. So those costs are around. It's around twenty thousand dollars a year to pay in. Snow removal, cleaning, making sure that the landlord puts flowers in flower pots. So no, I don't believe that's counting. We've never.
Definition of capital is any single item of furniture, but my costing five thousand dollars or more for the useful life greater than one year.
Useful life of.
Things that go into the capital improvement program, though, I believe are like valued at a hundred thousand dollars or more. Yeah.
So if you don't mind, take one of these and pass it around. This is a. So. The last thing I'd like you to look at. It's just like a rough draft of the near term budget. So this is. Kind of like, and I showed this to Anita and to Johnny, and they said this is fine to bring. This is the, just a single sheet in a document. That we, Jennifer and I were talking in terms of budget planning. And so looking at budget planning out three or four years. To where costs would go if we actually cycle in, certainly all the operational people without predicting like. How we would choose to address the capital needs. There are monies associated with this budget that would go into capital needs. And you leave could see. What this does is it breaks out by department. And so I don't, you know, for me. The reference points aren't necessarily the specific dollar amounts, but in some cases we have. Determining precise dollar amounts, like dollar amounts that are currently in here for staffing are based off of what the actual hourly and. Wage is currently for staff plus a thirty five percent premium of that for. Air and benefits. We don't know that that thirty five percent hold, but for now, that number reflects a fairly accurate budget. So twenty twenty four. As we said earlier, our budget would be nineteen, our anticipated revenue is about nineteen million. You see seventeen billion in expenses. Plus the projection in that very first year in twenty twenty four, we anticipate that we will not spend. Or not owe the city back seventeen million dollars. So just as a matter of exercise, what we did is we. Populated a number of the reserve balances that you will ultimately you will provide direction on. That's not. For me or for anybody else to say it's for you to decide, how much do you want to have in reserves? Do you want to have a, you know, reserve for parallel? Like, you want to have a reserve for capital expenses that are unanticipated. But. I think as important as all the numbers in the figure is to show that, like, hey, this thing works, like, it works to a certain degree, and there are savings. Probably in each year because of the budget jumps in twenty twenty six, or I'm sorry, in twenty twenty four to nineteen and twenty twenty six, it probably jumps to twenty. If you assume that, as my modeling does, a five percent increase in overall residential, not thirty nine, but five percent. In excess value, then we would probably jump to around twenty million by twenty twenty six. And so it all does work out. But I think. In. In, don't get overwhelmed by the numbers here because this is simply a draft. And I think as important on this document is the list of unknowns that are in the far right column. So there are some one time expenses that are unknown. We do not know. You know, we've taken a shot in the dark, estimating some costs, but we have not, you know, we we will not go out to bed until. Sometime later in this year. And so we don't know precisely what the costs are. I think probably the biggest one. That's a blank spot for us is what? Health insurance and benefits package we come up with. So the city's, you know, been reliably right around thirty five. Percent for the last few years. That's a fair number to take if a person's salary that they're offered a job at thirty five percent to, and that's the cost of providing employees with their benefits. But it was thirty percent five years ago. And it would not surprise me at all if it's forty or forty two or forty five percent in soon, right? So that will be one that until we actually have a bid on the table from an actual healthcare provider. We are not going to know precisely what that cost is. And so that is probably the biggest movable part in the in this document in terms of the dollar. A dollar amount, and that's an ongoing.
Can you just walk through the first three columns, city of, twenty twenty three city of Boulder sheet, free cost?
General fund.
General fund, okay. And can you just walk through what those columns are?
Yes, I absolutely will. Yeah, so the twenty twenty three. General fund. So this is what shows up the city management.
Okay.
The library. So each year in that whatever twelve million, fifteen million, there is a library fund. So we have previously up until this year, we've had. Point three, three mil tax on the on property.
Okay.
That's been existing since nineteen seventeen or something like that. So that number has grown significantly. So that money actually goes back into library operations as well.
I see. Okay.
And it ended this year, so. We have show, we showed the money in budget. That's a long story, but we we didn't have, since they're no longer collecting tax, we don't really have it in twenty twenty. Three, this current fiscal year, we do not have that revenue. So we actually funded it from other sources, library, reserves, savings.
Okay. But you're showing it as how how it would have played out if you were. Collect that mill was being collected this.
Well, it's to explain the overall kind of context of budget.
Okay.
By this, by these estimates. What we owe the city back, obviously, we're not owing the city back for the library. We would feasibly owe the city back for the city of Boulder general.
I see. Okay. Okay. Other sources. In addition to the property tax. So there's been. The city reimbursed itself partially for loss of property tax revenues from revenues in the library. I see. Library foundations money goes into library fund and then to the city. So it's, it's a mix of things. There's been. Okay, outstanding balance.
I think you have that packet for a later item, which I'm not sure. But you can look through, there's a number of accounts. That's an old. Document that kind of shows you that there are some balances. I don't, I think, I don't know what your presumption is, whether or not you get those funded back or. I mean, certainly the ones of library, that's the library's money. I can tell you that. At zero.
Negative.
I think we had to take a loan from the city to supplement that one point five million. Two, one, three of it.
Okay.
So we have to take a loan from somebody. Budget hole, so.
Okay.
There is like a two or three. Thousand dollar bill may come due at the end of year, but that's, that's where the budget isn't really money. The budget is the budget, and in real money, we hopefully will save that money. I mean, we'll see. It's there in case we need it.
Okay.
And then the library district direct cost or cost that we would assume. We are assuming that for contractors. For consultants, for some of the things that may fold over in contracts, there's a cost that will be paid directly from. Library district's revenue this year, so twenty twenty three, not that the city would necessarily be involved in, but rather it's money that we would use to hire consultants. I mean, we had initially thought that we would probably begin hiring. Facilities, IT staff in the course of this year, and they still, there'll probably be contracted place rather than. What you call them, regular staff. They could maybe roll into regular staff at some point in the future, but at present, we would.
In your salaries for those positions. Just like the findings and the, I always throw right into that.
Okay, got it, got it, okay.
So. I think that that's enough. Obviously, the, there are some things. That will be necessary expenses this year, like HR and finance, we have to buy software and payroll and. Either have a contracted personal staff to run them or be able to hire employees of the district without absolute certainty on benefits package or after benefits packaging. Those kind of things have been approved by in October, November, we can bring them at that time to run the HR finance payroll software.
Yeah.
There are some expenses that are coming. But so in any case, I mean, the. The estimate that. I'm using here is that. There are going to be costs associated with your running, but the district to the district this year, there are costs associated with these first recall. There are costs associated with at least what the city, we anticipate the city will ask for repayment. And then there's other costs, that stuff from the library fund that will not be cost that they can ask you.
So the loan you took out against. To. The loan you took out from the city to supplement the library fund, as you described, is it good?
It is folded in there, but we don't call it out. We, you you probably see it, well, we have it in other places in terms of potential for debt service. But that's not something that we anticipate. We're not building a budget over the course of the next decade. That would ever use debt service, but in this case, if if the city were to ask any, you know, interest on loan or something like that, if we actually have the money. I mean, the way we do this every year, like, there's a budget that we're given, we try to spend every dime of it that we can. We've never been on loan to the city anything. And so. Our operating idea at this point is, let's don't spend that two, three hundred thousand dollars that we don't have in the back, like. And that you do that through, you know, salary savings, vacancies are a couple of weeks longer. So, you know, maybe we didn't start on expense, but we don't bring in a. Person to look at some project. Now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
On the way, what is the county?
Well, we, I think it's a one percent, it's one percent or one and a half percent that we owe the county back every year for collection of taxes. So that's a, that's a dollar, that is one half.
Yeah.
Yeah. So one and a half percent we owe the county of all the revenues collect, we will owe the county back this year, and that's for the treasurer's office.
You said they want to get out of the business of that.
No, they want to get out of business.
You're sharp, Inc. Oh, okay, okay.
Take the money.
Okay. Is that a regular, is that a standard, is that a pretty common project?
Yeah, it's all. Treasures.
And applicable of nothing because it popped into my head as we're going over background. Could you guys bring organizations or the library?
Who else? So do you want to see the one that we're going to propose or the one that's currently in existence?
I was just thinking something that we're going to be interacting people to know who people are and where they are.
Yeah, we'll bring it back. We have one. I mean, we've been working on it. We've done several reorganizations over the past five or six years, and. We have one for the district. Happy to share it with you. And you'll get to meet all those people in July. I mean, at this point. Because of the conflict of interest that the city spoke of and how it still kind of works for negotiation. Nobody on the library staff really is working on the district stuff except for myself and to certain extent Jennifer as well. And so that, but. With regard to presentation at the master plan, they're pretty proud of it. They do great work and it's an amazing team. I'm. Sorry, Beta as a commissioner has had a chance to meet some Sylvia as well, Johnny has, but you'll be impressed. You will be massively impressed, I think, once you start meeting some of the staff. It's a great bunch. They can't wait to come and meet you. You're in the library, say hi, and say hello, trustee. They probably have already done the background research.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah. But yeah, they'll want to be coming in July as a presentation on a master plan, which is their responsibility. So it won't, that's not doing district work, that's going to be. An update of where they are and what programs are.
I can digress for just a minute to. Talk to the very precipice. They are available to us meeting with staff. They're going to talk with you about figuring out the best way to facilitate that, that's one of your staff chats. Makes sense to say, here we are. Same room, same, we're working smooth transition together. And here's the plan layout. So you can, you, we are authorized to tell you that, so you can talk with them about setting that up. So, it doesn't have.
Yeah, that'll be great. I mean, there it has come both in person and been on virtual meetings. So do a staff chat every month. It's a virtual, it's happens at noon. On either Tuesday or Thursday rotates from one to one. You guys could.
Back to the budget here.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty four, okay. So first, the reserves you have, that's at under point three. But those are actually money you're putting in reserve and that's actually planned to. Uh, my hand total, one time contribution to.
Oh, so you do actually call it the debt service. Yeah, okay, yeah. So it's it's at various points. I mean, so yes, that is a dollar amount. That we would contribute. To the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty four budget. So it's not, it's on the assumption that. Our assumption. Which I don't know if this is. Supposed to say this, but our assumption is that the amount we owe back to the city is about eight. And so that. Or eight to ten, say eight to ten million dollars. And so there is savings. I mean, if you forgot from that. Draft, anticipate spending. Of course, two or three, the difference between. And there would be some carryover from some. Perhaps, not, I don't want to, that's not something that we could predicate before the IGA is signed, but there. As Johnny mentions, there's money involved also, although I own such a, it's a portion of the IGA. So there could be some carryovers.
When you say money we owe back, is that the same thing as reimbursement?
Nah, that's just to make the budget, right? So our budget, going back to that very first sheet. This budget of, that was passed by the city, is twelve point seven, seven, three. Four, three, one. In order to get that number, so that we could show you our budget here and not operating at a deficit, we had to borrow three and fifty back from the city to be coal. The one point five million ordinarily can collect is point three, 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 tax, property tax. So there is no twenty twenty three, point three, three property tax collection out of. So we had to come up with a way to make. And so we put one point two million out of library fund and then three hundred and fifty thousand additional savings. So it would be. Advanced. Does that make sense?
You, you had just said, oh, back to city, you said like eight to nine million, not supposed to say that. And then I was looking here and it has like under assumptions reimbursement to the city. So I just wondered if I was to be adding.
Oh, the three fifty?
Not, and it has nothing to do with the three fifty. It's just, it's what you just said. Okay, you said eight to nine. Yeah, and so I was just asking reimbursement the same as what you owe back. Okay, okay. Good, because I was like, gonna add this guy. I was like, well, how come?
Eight to ten, maybe it's eleven, maybe it's six.
Okay.
It's like.
All right.
It's in that wheelhouse. It's the.
Okay, I just want to make sure I had the terminology.
So sorry. Probably need to bridge here. So twenty twenty four estimated seventeen million. We could potentially collect eighteen or something.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. That's the another million and a half, million. There's maybe two million. Reserves or million quarter, one point two five million. Put in reserves one time, that would add up probably eighteen and a half. Okay, so. Let's go on, bridging out the.
And that's not, that's not fully baked yet, right? Obviously, we don't know the precise revenue, we don't know the precise expenses we leave.
Right.
There is an assumption going through the budget that we would not have.
Yeah.
In just operational expenses. So there is ability to say a certain, but as.
What, yeah.
Did capital expenses. So if you were to spend a million dollars to fix up. This building or fix the leak finally, then. We would have to operate it again and.
So the capital. Costs. Aren't in this. Budget or?
They are.
They are.
Well, there's some capital, some capital.
This is from reserves.
Ah, okay, I see.
That one point two five million is, is.
What your budget name.
A placeholder for things such as critical facility backlog, IT startup costs. New office space. new office space and voucher for new employees and a facility study.
Got it.
And it's a wild guess.
Okay.
At, at the amount.
Okay, but you didn't include those in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, like capital expenses.
No.
Okay, I was, I was.
For Jenny out.
I know it's far out. I just, I just tried to get my head around.
Once we know more and what you want, we can adjust these numbers. We just put some things in there as placeholders, so we can see how shake out over the years and make sure we had enough money to.
Yeah.
Fund the basics.
This is kind of a cash flow.
It's, you know. And you know, the part that I don't know. Coming from anywhere else of the library, I was shocked at the amount of money that we have going for facilities. And so uh, it has been the case for the entire decade of it. I've always thought like, wow. And I, I've come to the conclusion that it's due to the age of facilities and the inability of the city to address it in any significant fashion at any point. So you'll see from year to year, like you are putting close to twenty five percent of your entire budget into people and stuff to maintain. Now there, that number could jump to twenty eight or thirty percent if you're doing something new. No, well, obviously that might jump higher. You don't know what we'll do in Gun Barrel. That's not in the, in other reports. In the master planning thing, it could be, could be a major capital expense for you to decide to purchase a building or less of the capital expense. But we'll still have to fix the bill to make it a like. So there are costs associated with each of it. But yeah, it's a, it is, that's the part which in our pure libraries, when you compare the costs one to one, ours are extraordinarily.
How much older are, are, are our buildings compared to, you keep sort of saying it's like much older.
I mean, somewhat, yeah, I mean, our last, before Nobo, the last capital investment was in the, I think it's ninety two, I think we, we renovated, expanded. This building was completed in nineteen twenty two. That's the last major investment.
Correct.
And so, you know, if you factor in a nineteen oh seven building, nineteen sixty eight building, this building nineteen eighty two, this building that we're sitting in, nineteen sixty one. There, it's pretty old assets. Average years. Reynolds was intended as a fifty year, but I think it's fifty four counting. If there's, there are needs. To be addressed, build a building, thinking it's going to fit for fifty years. Fifty four stuff starts to break.
The cost of labor and materials, all of that, is it an all-time high too?
Yeah, this, this modeling doesn't do a very good job of that. I mean, this city's modeling doesn't either. I mean, I know we've passed when we did, we the city used like a two percent uh, non-personnel expense increase annually. You know, construction costs have increased over thirty percent last two years. And there's no, I don't know. There, there's reason to assume that those costs are coming back down. Still, so they will continue, hopefully not. Yes, little. That's why I have it, happy to talk to you.
No, no, I, I don't. Well, we're just. You know. Just wanted to make sure we understood.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I don't know how much you guys are going to want to, we all have to dig in by the time. This was intended really to show you that, like, there's a lot of stuff. I would like to do a lot of stuff tomorrow as well. But we can't do everything. So we'll have to go through an exercise. We really have to prioritize. And, you know, I think as you see from the master plan, like, maybe technically things is, we talk to the community. So we, we're going to talk to the community and find out what they want, and that will help inform your decisions about where you prioritize. And where you spend. I think the positive news is, is that I believe, I feel pretty confident, right, that there's money in here to do the things without, I mean, from this. And I think maybe it's three years, maybe it's seven. We can make it through all. But where really the road reaches to go is if you start talking about some major capital expansions. Or if you place where we don't, there's something where the benefits have to be, be, be seriously. I know you all recommend the right thing. You have to do it without the nonsense, understand that, like, you're trying to cost forever and costly. So every time there's an operation cost, that's something that will impede your ability to have capital expenses. Let's throw in a project like Blue Box, the K and D. Then we'll replace the carpeting in Carnegie.
Is there anything the city's going to provide in the way of budget and finance that would conflict with anything in, in, in this rural budget or?
This budget, the, the city, this is not a city budget. This is one that we've done.
Okay.
So um, you know, the city's budget, I don't, you know, the, Johnny knows more city budget processes than probably ninety nine percent of Boulder. It's, it is a complicated document to read. I think you have a reason to assume that our numbers on the general fund is this, taking directly from Open Co. These numbers shouldn't vary. These should be exactly the numbers. That's the system by which we now accomplish budget. So it's online, you can go confirm that. City will get to it somewhere. I think what we don't know is, there's a lot of things that we don't know if the city comes back and confirms. The cost of the facilities backlog.
And what they're going to do.
We estimate the cost is three point four million dollars. The labor and all of that cost, some auditorium company every two years. And does their best estimate on how city services, internal services, HR, equal and finance and payroll and IT facilities are divided among the twenty-two departments of the city that we have.
Okay.
That, and primarily those departments of the general fund have a higher percentage of some departments.
Where are we in that cycle?
I think it's this year on the internal cost allocation. The current number is three point four million dollars is what they estimated as, that they've been consistent about that number throughout this entire process.
Well, we're still in. Because we'll have to replace.
So it seemed like breathing. Start to try to match up numbers in the city, but it's fitting.
Mm-hmm.
But hopefully it will be.
So like, I mean, thinking about like what happened in December with the meth testing and all the remediation costs that were incurred. Like, so when something major like that happens, how does, like, how is the budget, like, is it amended? Is it, how, how did that?
Uh, you know, facilities department allocates a percent, they. Library related stuff. And so we keep through all of that.
Yeah.
Maybe that's not so. Good luck trying to get it fixed, fixed the rest of this year because they expended that money on renovation and on the bathroom. And I think dollar amount for that was like a hundred eighty two. The bathrooms in. So that is a cost that, you know, I don't know how it will be. If that's something the city would request or is it costing current?
So and again, just for background, each year, the city takes the out of the library's budget. For facilities. So the library has essentially a pay. Are we ready to move into consultants? I think that's the sort of second.
Yeah, so until, I mean, I, I'll keep this really simple. Um, and the intent. Once I'm on board and you've passed the financial policy, excuse me. Support the board of trustees in the IGA negotiations, bring on IT cons, primarily because I don't know that anyone on this board has that special skill set. I do not have that special skill set. And I think you want to have somebody who's going to be there to help inform you in context of the city saying, um, really, the city really. A lot of the IT related things are library stuff that we have never outsourced on listening, that the city can manage. But it's primarily some software maintenance contracts. And the second consultant would be to bring in a financial consultant, primarily to help us with this cash flow analysis, double check math, do some modeling to better enable you all to go in and help with those projections going through and, not only in terms of our cost, but and then the uh, the third consultant would be, oh, gosh, I said IT, I said, oh, I didn't say. So I think where you're going to need to have, there's a lot of data. On facilities and understanding the facilities, the context of this IGA. Like there is the buildings, they have value, the estimates are done by a real assessor who works for the city, but it's nevertheless, there are real assessments around it. It's for the land. And then there's the maintenance. You know, there's rough estimates that are out there. We listed some lists of things at various points by facilities I shared with us, the actual cost associated with the last year. In, in internal cost allocation purposes, I think that number is around one point eight, two million dollars annually of that three point four million dollars. So really, the annual cost is like, it's all facilities, IT, the IT facility, internal cost allocation, maybe around seven to eight hundred thousand. And facilities is coming out to that neighborhood. And then all the rest of it make up that. So those are two things that I think you best have a good grasp on. Um, I'm also curious to see some of the information that's provided. Typically estimated it. Well, everywhere from, of course, the time here, it'd be currently fifty million dollars to, no, it's three, it's two. City does a good job of analyzing the buildings. We have grades on all buildings that we currently have, city, including library buildings. There is no plan to address the maintenance or to bring our grade up any higher. This building, the ninety-two building is the one that creates the best and it's a B. And we do have two buildings that I think rated out as a D on this assessment. That's from all perspectives, right? So from things that need maintenance, energy efficiency, all of this, things that need, so a lot of different matrices to put that together. And uh, you know, you, you can go into whatever depth you want with the city. But also, I think, best to bring in a consultant to help advise you on that as well, because the through the, I have, through Nobo, there's been a lot of turnover. So the guy managed all that software has left the city. They've not placed it. They don't have a financial analyst on them, so we see right now. So they, they have the number of staff structures, just for the balance of things. You can draw your own.
The IT consultant. Is that going to be kind of setting up the internal networks, breaking apart from the city? Is that what you?
No, my apologies. So the, when, I, these, these three consultants, finance, IT, facilities.
Yeah.
Are mainly to advise you in the terms of the IGA.
Costs. Okay, yeah. All of it.
So the migration uh, of the IT with stuff, we have different contract, as will the migration to a financial system and a payroll system. As will recommending an HR package, but that's not something that I can embark upon until we're ready to do so. And when we've started to wrap up our hands around the IGA. Where it's going to go.
So these first year, you know, bring as soon as possible.
As soon as possible. I've, we, I've met with IT consultants since January, you know, to see if we could get some. So we have, you know, we have talked to at least three different firms. Right. Major bids and RFPs, not going to, based on what I've seen from you guys currently, financial. Once the financial policy is in place, I will follow that to the letter about how we go about consultants. Financial consultant on Monday, spoken to another. So these consultants, we've not dug in how. Assess the facilities backlog as we have it and all of the data the city provides in addition to two thousand and nine facilities faster than the library and the Carnegie plan to be extended. Plus, we did a study of this building, I don't remember, seventeen, eighteen, in anticipation of potentially renovating this building. So there are a lot of documents, documentation that I think probably want to consult to say like, they go through all this.
Are you evaluating consultants, like track record or, or do we need to answer your questions? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's, I mean, with the financial consultant, I, I don't think we're really, there's a laundry list of stuff we need. Um, and really all we're looking for at this point is somebody to be able to cash flow analysis for us. Um, once we get down into building out a payroll and finance system, that kind of stuff. Or maybe these people bid, all the people that we've spoken to, like with the IT consultants, it's whether or not they could do the job in time and fashion. So it's really like, can you do this? Can you have a turnaround? They all are competent. One doesn't. Negotiation with. Although the discover the work is well.
Yes, yeah. It's like we're just trying to get numbers to put into our financial.
Yeah, not from the financial, yeah, from the IT person, I think you want, you're, you're going to want to have a little bit more uh, sense of what, if, if you agree to something with the city, whatever that may be, what kind of cost may be. Which will, which will inform your decisions with your IGA. Anything you accept within any of these, like with regard to the buildings or IT, those are our major term cost allocation costs. They could become major, they will be significant cost centers in, you know, the district. You're dealing with this thing. It's like, IT is twelve percent of the budget, you know. Facilities is. There's, there, there, these are major costs. Aside from staffing, those are your major. Staffing, that, those are your main.
Any questions about? Let's return to that.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. So subcommittee, um, you guys need a summary of the proposal or?
I know. Always. And no one ever. That's my wish. Sitting, sitting with all these attorneys, like hold their flatters for hours without having to take a break.
It's a hard ball of negotiation. Now you start talking about, it's like, well, maybe we all should go to the restaurant.
My mom taught me shit, never pass up.
I guess so, yeah. I had to go deal with like the perky thing because I was getting shut out of the, our mobile device. And then it was, and then he, when they said, smarter doctor, I decided, oh, you.
So is there theater not open? Someone that could pass by?
It's, Jennifer, is the theater open and all?
Theater's open. Uh, are you going to see the restaurants?
No.
No, theater?
Just didn't.
No, we're didn't see it. It's just uh, not. The technology is not great and the comfort of the seats is not great. The technology is not great and the comfort of the seats is not great. I mean, the original seats, so. It needs some love. But we may do with it, have progress there. No, it's just not really a, it's not that you're running it out to somebody who assumes it or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you leave the lights off, it's squint, it looks nostalgic. Turn the lights on and open your eyes, you realize the carpeting hasn't been changed since 1992. And the seats were used when they went in.
I'll just say, right?
What do you got?
$250 to rent it for a few hours and then it's additional if you run it past the time that the library's open. And there are some other fees, like staff help, lights or sound, and security, we need security. I don't know that we're actively renting it right now because. It's just, um, we just hired a staff person this year to run it and she's trying to get it spruced out. We're not really close for. Do you guys have a look, Sam?
I did, it was delicious.
Is it, do you have like a big?
I don't think so, I don't think so, I don't think so, I think it was just chocolate. I was gonna say maybe something toffee or caramel. Not that I could tell.
Yeah.
And the bookshop. Yeah, the master craftsman. He actually designed. I don't know if you stop, it's on your way and you're coming on like.
I came in on.
If you go out the other side, you'll see it, it's a really nice place to generate, we sell books. Jitters like. We have great books.
Where do you pay for them?
On the book sale? I'm obsessed with. There's always good stuff because readers come and they like donate their book, you know, and they come to the library. And so it's like all the great libraries, you can't even find, you can't, you have to wait 10 weeks on the library waitlist to get sometimes. Or this book sale.
When is that, the book sale?
It's always, it's forever.
Ongoing.
Always. What's the one we can do from that? We have that on here, right? What's a general website? Is that right?
They've jumped quite a bit since we.
28 events for me.
We did this. So we redid. It's entirely volunteers.
That's okay.
We're a dedicated crew.
My library foundation. I considered volunteering to be a book sale stock or shelf first.
Did you see him earlier? Didn't get to him earlier.
I could come during work hours and, you know.
Totally selfless.
Totally selfless, exactly.
Johnny, we have to, we have to tour.
Oh, yes.
I could show people the basement.
Yes.
Books.
That's right.
Waiting to go, waiting to see the light.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. From the basement, so.
It's, uh. It's daunting.
Yeah.
See how many donations.
Yeah. Good. Well, shall we pick it up again? Okay. So last week, we discussed some committees, possibly about two subcommittees. Here looking at, I think, six subcommittees, budget finance, staffing, facilities, bylaws, governance, communications. We talked at the agenda setting session, we all agreed that this is probably not the time to do a proper call. Membership in those subcommittees. You know, we're just figuring out how to work together and we're trying to move really quickly, so we can go with this done this year. So it seems like the right time, future, it seems like there could be really good things.
Maybe not even be either.
Yeah, yeah. Community members.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, there may be some individuals who probably tend to have advice on specific things. That's something to discuss as well. But I think the first thing tonight is to walk through these, these committees and see if it makes sense to everybody. Asked, did some preliminary trust and subcommittees, some of them worked out pretty well. In other cases, got multiple people and we really shouldn't have more than two people, two trustees. So with that, oh, and then the other thing we did, so Chris Messchuk sent over to us, executive team, a list of. Information item areas that the city wanted to develop staff for us to be informed by. And then David and Jen took that and added the library staff and added some other items. So this agenda item 72 is a list of potential. Briefings, if you will, that the city and the library staff prepared to give us. Our thought was that it probably makes sense for most of those, not all, but most of them to be done by subcommittees. Just because seven of us, they're all about the work process and trying to get us together for addition. So that's another thing to weigh in on. And then the last piece in this part of the packet is some slides that were presented to the LDAC back in 2022. And that means the extent to which the LDAC went into some of these issues of discussing. So I just dropped. He's got that information, he should kind of go into the subcommittee. Any questions about kind of how we set this up? The LDAC recommendations were solely that, they were just recommendations, they weren't, no one agreed to anything. They said, this city, we're like, this is what we want to do, once it happens, they. It was just a. No, it went to city council, the city council sort of generally. Okay. Okay, okay. Things that the city council. Leadership of the buildings, of how to appoint the trustees. Those were things in which there was disagreement. Okay. Because some of these things. Okay. Some of these things seem like negotiation points to, yeah, okay. That's part of the reason. Cool, okay. Could kind of see this.
And I think for example, some of them are a.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I'm standing, I have a spine. No, that's great. So having looked at this, um, the bidding for. I know it's going to be hot and heavy. So you can, we, you're recommending two because of the three person public meeting. Okay.
I don't mind taking my name off the staff. Some squirrel of us there.
And Sam, I did talk with him a little bit before and he indicated that staff is his first choice. I think he'd be a good, good person for that, given his experience of school.
But it seems like Jen had a lot of experience. In HR, so I, that's why I took my name off of that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm happy to.
Back.
To defer to Sam and Jen.
Okay, so Sam, yeah, staffing, easy one. Um, and then budget and finance, I don't think Sam wants to serve on too, so I don't know if there's someone else who wants to step into budget and finance there. Um, I would be interested, I mean, just going through even this, piqued my interest in the budget side. And I could take my name off communications and if you just work on some of the internal communication stuff, when we get to that. But external communications, I necessarily.
Sounds great.
Jen's for budget and finance?
Extra.
Yeah.
They only have IGA, some committee is Anita, Kara, so.
Yeah, what I think we need to talk about that.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so bylaws and governance. I'm happy to drop off, I'm happy to stay on. We'll say, right now, we do have items on the agenda for the 13th. Asked if we could do bylaws, but then I think bylaws should be pretty straightforward. Kim's advice has been, for now, let's keep it simple and flexible as possible, you understand? So I'm happy to work on that when I as, as you go to see for that, so.
Um, I'd kind of like to stay on that one, but I mean. Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm just looking at.
You signed up.
Whatever, so I'm happy to.
Yeah, because you've done a lot of legwork on that already.
So Sylvia and, yeah, bylaws and then communications.
Sure, yeah.
But then the IDA subcommittee, we've gone back and forth about whether we need this and it relates to how we. Communicate with one another. Do you want to talk about your vision for this?
Yeah, because we originally like took it off the list and then when we were having a. Our meeting last Wednesday after this meeting, I asked to be put back on because I just think the IDA is. Sort of a cornerstone of what we're doing and I think it's not just for the process of now, but it's also to just be accountable for that. You know, in the years that follow, just to affirm that it was a smooth transition and there weren't outstanding issues. Or if there were, you know, somebody has the sort of institutional knowledge of that and the connection to it. So I just thought it could also be a, a role of coordinating what is coming from committees and making sure that sort of the sentiment that's behind. You know, some of our recommendations are, are there, so.
That sort of ties in nicely to the communications piece too, because if you have a big picture strategic look at it.
Yeah.
Easier.
That's true, it's the two of us for those two.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like it.
I think we're going to also point people, interact with. Be. It could also be good, additional meetings or whatever, follow up to certain staff members on key points. Like, I don't know if you gave Tonya on their little idea.
Their little idea. We asked the city to take the lead in communicating with them about what to expect. And that they probably could expect in the next 90 days. You know, but one of the things just related to communications is that in this conversation we were having with the city manager and Chris. At four o'clock, we, you know, we were talking about the value of, you know, our community engagement and, and, you know, so I got the fact that. You know, it was just clear that the timing of subcommittees with outside volunteers just didn't make sense for our schedule and what we're trying to do here now. But looking for a way to connect the community to celebrate the uniqueness of like where we're at, like, you know, that it's reform this district. It's this, you know, community education and information that relates to the IDA and, and what we're doing, so it does link nicely. And, and I think that that's a way to involve people in the community with this and give, you know, sort of perspective and transparency. To the process, so. I'm excited about it.
In terms of communication, I think it's, I would recommend that we continue the practice that David's always established on the library commission, which is that. He's the one that contacts through which we go through for everything. Some cases that it's CCing him, got permission to some. Same thing with Chris area, so we need to make sure we keep those ones clear. Nobody's going to get in the way of anybody, but just make sure that they. If you look at this table, the agenda item 72, you'll see the information. Subcommittee will take on and presumably send this to the city managers. They will then start to work to schedule. The thing with subcommittees. These get a DA subcommittees, it's how we. Detroit's getting. David Kirby needs to be there. Um, we do have, I think, a couple of. Couple of meetings in the advance agenda that was kind of a little chaotic, that could be. Staffing, so maybe each subcommittee members can talk and see if it makes sense and communicate. Time, and should best. Sketch, staff, city will be fairly flexible in. First, so we'll give events.
Yes.
And David, who will again authorize to work with you to do schedule.
Many of them, some of these participated in the IGA, I mean, in the LDAC.
Yeah.
So they'll have some of that information.
And with Lisa, Lisa Cooper? Yeah.
This is.
Yeah. She was the person who was in Jennifer's seat first. And then at the end of this, you'll see there were some things that we thought we just should be. You know, part of this picture and technology. And David, did you want to talk at all about the people who give us advice? In the subcommittees?
Because we see. You know, so, yeah, they're, they're all interested in the finance. I mean, I think that's probably your place for your long-term. That's a big part of your job, so that'd be forming something there and so. There are three, you on the commission currently and two, I, to be in your seats, who are interested in participating in that to whatever extent. Need, like, if you happen to help out, there's another person who's interested and is willing to sit in and help out on the IT related stuff. But he's not going to take a consulting gig, he's not going to do any of that, but he also applied as a group trustee member in his background as IT. So he's happy to sort that out. He's a long time library. That's Andy, I think you guys, a lot of you know Andy.
It may be, I'm just a little, on the IT thing, just trying to get my head around what the person's going to do, what, what. And maybe we could, I don't know, have a presentation just briefly on what, what's in the 700 to 800,000 dollars that the city charges the library for IT? What we see will be new or something, and maybe that we don't know, maybe.
We would, we would bring the seat.
Yeah.
It comes every two years.
Well.
Whether, I don't, I don't want you to be in a position where you're trying to judge.
He's talking about IT.
I, yeah, well, I'm saying that that's what you said the cross was, I'm, I'm just wondering what the actual stuff is that they.
Yeah, so.
That that is in that number.
Yeah, so primarily, primarily network services and the, and the equipment, so software and hardware that we're interested in seeing.
Yeah, okay. Like computers.
Way more public computers, so secure.
Yeah, okay.
City takes computer, computers, I mean, various.
Right.
Station. And so there are all kinds of costs and, you know. We have a whole. Library staff, there are only three of them now, but there, there's library staff who are also focused on. IT and those kind of issues as well as a huge chunk of change that we have outsourced to now a, a, a group that we're members of called Marmot. This on the Western Slope, they, they've managed our ILS for a couple of years, a certain amount of time, so that all of our patron data and records, because the city really wants to manage those there. Have the capacity to do credit card transactions, all of those things are already outsourced. And I'm happy to bring in any and all of those people if you'd like, we could bring Marmot into, they gladly join a meeting and you guys could ask them questions about the ILS. There are costs directly that we'll show you. There are costs directly that will show you what goes for it. Um, the city services that suppose it's seven hundred thousand dollars is a little bit more ambiguous.
Okay, I, I just, yeah, I just kind of, and maybe that's what the consultants do and I, I. I get the facility piece, I get the. The other piece, that's just like, okay.
The, the cost, I, I don't know, so in some of the areas, it's a quick question, so in some of the areas that we could probably save money. From what the, depending upon what you guys want to, so we can save money. On the, what is projected to be the internal cost allocation, so for instance. I T is not one of those places, right, so I T, we are going to have to hire staff.
Yeah.
We're going to have to hire or contract with the company to do security. We are going to have to hire a network administrator, which we don't have. So somebody to manage the network, we can be sure that we don't have it, yeah, which is. So, so, I T is one of the places where we did that benchmark, you know, against. Six other libraries, our costs, the seven hundred thousand dollar allocation was low. The reason why it was so low though is because we have outsourced all these other things regarding the I L S administration, all of our data, so overall the cost. Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wondered, yeah.
I think the main question you're going to have consultant, my assumption. The impacts of separating out from all the contracts that the city currently has.
Yeah.
The impacts from decoupling the network, if that's a, 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 a need that the city has to decouple the network. Um, right now, we all are in the same gigapop here, you know. And then there are grants that we can apply for, we, I mean, if we're, if we are on a decoupled network, then the state offers a grant that we could get. Offset some of those costs, but right now we can't do it as a city because they cannot discern. How much of the data and how much of the juice to use a. Crater or, or extra use, we can't say.
Do we have an I T committee? I, I wondered because it's, it feels like there's a, each consultant has a subcommittee they could liaise with except for. I T. And is that because that person will be dealing kind of directly with you? Cons- consulting with us, or is there like a?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm happy to have a subcommittee for I T.
I don't. I don't.
I don't.
I don't. Like, I am, I, I am very.
It kind of sounds like I T would. Fit within all of the subcommittees though, is the problem, yeah, because it's like facilities, it's a facilities question, it's a finance question, it's a H R question, it's a.
There are a lot of different. The I G A negotiations, in a personal opinion, it's not discussed in the L D A, but after staffing, the I T stuff is. Important in the building, stuff. You have a lot, there's a lot of data, we have a lot of data that runs the library, some of it's in a, you know, third part, so those are, that's all great, like. I don't, I just don't know since the L D A.
So, and that's, it's, it's so vitally important, you think all seven of us should be part, like, brought along for that.
Well, and that what that does is that there will be a public presentation, it's not a subcommittee, that's not a public meeting, so I think that's probably a benefit as well. You have to see it, which will mean that my I T staff can also come, as can the city's I T staff, as can the consultant and interested members of the community that we know.
Great.
They can come and then, you know, you could have a conversation with them. For instance.
Our, our first public participation.
Yeah, I mean, I think there will be other people who are here.
Yeah, okay.
Will be able to help advise you, I, I'm not saying that the city has. What they know, what they want to do, I don't know. But it's important.
You mentioned some other things about city servers. The broadband.
There's a lot of things, yeah, we are on the five, we're a hub of fiber line. And there's a lot of things, we, we are, we store city servers for other services, we have. Stairs, we, you know, we, uh, we are the drop. Like, there's a lot of stuff in this whole business that has to be figured out, I mean, they, they own the building, they can do whatever they want, it's not that I'm, I have a gripe with any of it, they want to leave servers here and have us. Drop point for disposal, uh, that's fine, but, um.
You know, it'd be interesting to know too with the, you know, expansion of the district and our boundaries, right, like just if there are any. Technology issues related to our expanded area.
Could be in Gondor. Right, so we have, we will have, once we connect all of our branches and we've made, you know, fiber. I don't believe there is fiber line in Gondor, it's obvious, I know how to tap into. So, you know, when you figure in the capital cost for opening a Gondor branch, if having fiber, that unlimited data essentially at that location is important to you. And we're talking about a cost.
The fiber line, that's fine, I don't know how far.
So we'll have a connection from wherever the, there's. Things, maybe that's what we locate. Because it is costly.
Yeah.
Also, could I suggest that everybody get together? North Subcommittees, or something, next week and then come back next week and can talk about what our plan is. City staff, library staff. I don't think, worry about your availability, do you, do you have like?
You just tell me how late it happens.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you know, figure it out, I gotta, if I have to cancel meetings, I will, I have very few that I have. I cannot cancel. Basically, anybody has access to my calendar. I find myself.
Okay, alright.
Gentlemen, to get you back through the committees.
Yeah, sure. So. Capping, sandwich. But in finance, it's still. Bylaws. Communications. I T A is.
Okay. No, no, no.
What was that last?
Um, just my, my name is Kara.
Oh, true. Okay.
Okay, um, Jennifer, you want to show us the webpage?
This is the main library, the main. Hold of the library webpage. Or if S T's link is here under about. It replaced a, a page of information about the formation of the district, which is now linked from your page, so the information is all still there if somebody wants to go back. Visit the history. Information is at the top of the page. These, um, meetings are also entered into the library's event calendar, so eventually we'll have a way to automate it so that. Entries in the calendar just feed right onto this page. Right now, though, we're, we're managing it, um, through Celia, she'll be updating this. There's general meeting information. Trustee responsibilities. List of board members and terms, and from here, I believe. Um, your bios will be linked to another page, so we're just gonna do that, do it that way, so we limit the amount of scrolling that people have to do to get to information. They might be interested in. And then at the bottom here, we'll, in reverse. Chronological order, we will. Um, post your agendas and other materials. So, let's see. There will be a comment form that will, um, be added to this page and it will, the link to it will appear up in this library district resources box. And it's very similar to the one we have for the library commission.
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes, please complete your library business and exit the building, thank you.
It will be contact library board trustees. Person with the information for you will fill out their name, their email address and their message. Messages will be distributed to the email distribution, let's say, I sent to you all today, it's, um, with your. Boulder library district, um, email addresses. Plus David, Celia and I will also receive those messages. Those messages are stored in the database for ninety days and then they're deleted, so we always have access to, to past messages. The way that works for the, the library commission is any communications that come through their portal are. Put into their meet, their next meeting packet, along with any answers. And the way we currently work with commissioners is the, um. The chair or their designated will respond to the inquiry. If they need staff assistance or they want staff to answer the questions, because sometimes the questions are more easily answered by us. They'll just let me even and I know and take care of the. Response and then we'll also include that in packet. So that is one question for you is that, is that similar kind of process, the way you'd like to. Operate for the.
Together an informal directory of all of us, phone, just phone numbers and the library district emails, so that we, when we do try to connect with each other. When I can even do it in a Google Doc or Google Sheet. People wanted to send me their phone numbers and their email addresses. I'm, I'm happy to do that.
So Johnny shared an email, right, that has all of our emails.
Oh, I didn't get.
And then.
What was that?
With everybody's new library email addresses?
Yeah.
With, with the library email addresses.
I didn't get that.
You sent a list to all of us?
Yeah.
I don't think.
Maybe, uh, maybe you collected it and you just sent it to.
Like, I know I sent it to you.
And then the phone, and then I just don't have any, anybody's phone number except for Doug, so Doug just gets all my taxes. Sorry, Doug.
I'm easily impeached.
Um, so if y'all just want to, so when Johnny sends that email. If you want to email me your phone numbers, I will put a little Google Sheet together that has everybody's contact info. Does that seem like the right move?
Yeah, I mean, it says it and it's to all of your current. Let me send it again.
Oh, I have three from you and my spam, Johnny, there are.
Always nice to be.
You, uh, any.
Why, you're, I don't know where you, all, literally all three of them, Johnny's emails are my spam. I wonder why, Johnny?
I'm not.
Maybe because there was three.
I don't think I have them. In either.
Me, Tony sis.
You got it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It was Thursday.
What email are you sending it to?
I'm sending to. Oh, it's.
Kara's not on your list.
Oh, that's all right. She's on the list, I'm looking. To Kara dot O'Brien dot.
But on the two, on the May twenty fifth. Her name isn't there. And you gave me a T initial.
I did, me too.
And Doug T.
Because Google will not let me do two emails and then put them. So I had to set up separate. Addresses or separate contacts.
The library will be closing in ten minutes, please complete your library business and exit the building, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, it should just be, there's no apostrophe in O'Brien, that would be the, that would be, oh, there it is.
There it is.
Just now.
I got a fraud.
I'm sorry?
I got a fraud.
From Johnny.
Saying that this is from a, this, this Johnny tier. It's not the Johnny tier that is.
Yeah. Well, that could be because.
That's smart.
Putting up, yeah.
Okay.
Jen, I'm sending you my phone right now.
Thank you. So you, so we need to send you phone?
Yes, please.
Jennifer.
Questions under agenda and other materials, so currently we post. And they're archived on the city's, um, database for the library commission. Meeting agendas, meeting packets, any handouts that are distributed during the meetings. And then, um, and audio recording. Same? Less, more?
You will have minutes. Next week.
Yeah, I think, I think we should continue the commission's practices, I mean, very. Eventually, you know, you'll help us with our records, formal record retention.
Yeah, so I can ask that. Um, how long do you want the packets and all other information available on the website before they're.
But do you guys, they could be archived as soon as. Is the question.
Question, sorry.
So we post all the meeting materials here and along with the recordings. And then after a certain amount of time, we'll remove them and just archive them, so they won't appear on the website, they'll still be saved. On, in the library's files, but.
I think they should be there in very public, at least during this transition phase. I think.
Yeah.
We should have a track of, you know, what we've done from day one.
What are we, how long are we having them up for the commission?
Um, I think, well, it changed when we stopped posting them exclusively. On their, on the commission's page and they're, they're now in the city database, so they go back. As long as the city has them in their database, but I think when we were maintaining it on the website, we did it for. One year back in current.
For now, I think everything should be there.
I think you're gonna end that page really long, so you might have to like do another link for like. You know. Do that the month, the current month and then, or.
Right, yeah, it doesn't all have to be like this.
When there's one month being a month, you could probably put more.
I think it should only be slightly accessible for a while. Certainly the next year.
And I think if you can, for I T, it would be really good to. Collect the commission packets and transfer those over into the archive for the library district. I don't know how much of a pain that would be, but again, having that history, I think, would be important. I don't know, we can talk about that, I just, you know, I'm just, my experience trying to find anything in the city. So anybody who wants to try and find out information about. Anything on the library. We can talk about that.
We'll bring to you. Two state archives as lists and recommendations. Bring together a presentation, if you adopt that and then fail something. We make sure, if everybody takes care of that.
But since it's no statutory or regulatory obligation to maintain records on the website for any particular amount of time or there is.
They'll be in that.
Okay.
You're fine.
Okay.
Have any resolutions to vote on in this meeting?
I know.
And then, uh, one more thing.
The library will be closing in five minutes, please complete your library business, exit the building, thank you.
I wanted to make, um. Photos and documents on our website accessible. And, um, so we're having to go back and kind of reconfigure some of the documents that are already posted and one of the things that would help. Um, make P V Fs especially accessible or at least come with tags that we can. make PDFs especially accessible, or at least come with tags that we can make them accessible. And I'm kind of talking outside of my wheelhouse here, so I'm sorry. This doesn't make a lot of sense. Is it, uh, you could save any documents from their native application as a P D A, not print as a P D A, but save them as. Apparently that, that, um, the way you save it matters in, in terms of how they're accessible. And I have a few other questions that are not website related, but. Um, I understand some of you would like to have a hard copy packet.
Just here at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe. No, I can read the thing on. I like to take notes. Okay.
Okay. Always, always, forever, never.
Thank you.
He committed to bring.
Okay.
Can you just do that?
Always, always, forever. And for the yearly meetings, like this evening, it's dinner at five o'clock, okay?
See, that seems fine.
Yeah.
This is a question of, are we meeting at five next week? For sure.
Last question.
Two hours.
When, uh, whenever we do an executive session, it'll be, since you're working, I have a big man that says, doesn't go in packet, it'll just go out to the individual trustees. So you won't see it.
And more invited to send dinner preferences to Jennifer. They usually rotate around.
Celia will be taking care of the voters. I believe she'll be here at, at the next meeting, driving.
And do remember to get your bios into Gemma. Just forward say it.
As long as we're talking about the minutes and stuff, I want, um, all your minutes have to say either. They can have lots of conversation. Yeah, we fixed it both ways. Some are half, these ones, some are six things. Whatever your preference, if you want, we can just launch into it. There is no legal advantage either way. Sometimes it's great to have all the information, sometimes it's still. You just don't know.
I, I like, I mean, Celia does minutes with the commission and she's like rock star at that. And I really liked, I mean, you're, you're, it's almost like you're right back there in that moment. Like, we just permitted, she's really, really, uh, he told, but I mean, it's, again, that's just my preference, but.
Right. Particularly now, particularly because we don't have any public here. I think it just be good to document, share, I agree with that, overshare.
Then I think that takes us up to trustee matters and. So, yes. Next.
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today and we look forward to seeing you again.
So next week to talk about the, you know, I G A contract. David. If we can, Chris, if we, to Kim, um, do you want to deal with insurance for the reliability?
I have a question. If we can only come partial.
That's me.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Is that, yeah.
Absolutely. The other question I have, when you had the, uh, packet, we did, I know we did public comment tonight, uh, but like for the special meetings, is that required to do a public comment or can we expense that during our special meeting and, um, and then do a public comment only on our, on like our regular meeting?
Yeah, certainly.
It's up to you guys. I just, I just think.
There, there's nothing that we started. But you're gonna edit it anyway, so.
Right, I mean, I think.
We keep it contained.
Yeah, I think for me, it's, might be, I mean, we don't have any controversial issues now, but this set a precedent that we do it during regular meetings and for the special meetings, like, if they're like kind of working sessions. We, we can always think of exceptions.
Yeah, it's fine. You have, you have five years on commission. We have covered four terms. So it's not, tends to be a good bit.
Yeah, I just believe in having it there, but I, you don't have to take up that much space, like, you know, with all the other pieces there. Get, like, it's, it gets more time, more, um, white space than.
Keep it in. I mean, as, I'm not, I think, I just. Maybe.
Like, maybe we'll, yeah, somebody will show up, but I just like having it there. Like, it's a sign that we were open and welcoming if somebody did show up. So.
We will definitely keep portion. But you can't, can't, first note, you can't force it as you have. See, so that was. Something. Page.
Yeah.
And so next week, we again have a five to eight meeting. Um, do we need it? It's seven or five and I think we're done.
So I was wondering, do people prefer starting at five or at six?
Next week I'd like to start at five, but it's because I have a meeting at six.
Driving to Michigan, so I will be only attending by phone, but I think that still makes it warm if I'm dialed in. Okay, okay.
Just do plan on five this.
Okay.
We could say five to eight and then.
Yeah.
We don't need it.
Great.
Anything else that's good to the order?
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
I was told there are prizes.
So there are chips.
Yeah, so, yeah. Summer Discovery is our, it's literally our biggest program. Honey, time, it's a thirteen group of planning and staff. Uh, it includes adults, so. Well, the, the flip side is the adult side, so. Seventy-five percent of Spencer children, you know, we have. You know, teens have a pretty good, but adults, I think, speaking of teens, the last couple of years. So it's simple. You sign up, you record what you read. There are prizes along the way, but there is a prize for guest pass for the G D rec center of your choice in Boulder, uh, should you sign up, um, just to be in the program.
Get that into the I G A, I G A negotiations.
Baby. Now, just, we, we negotiate that with the city. We have a lot of sponsor groups of like that, basically, fund center of public things you can have access to. Either, we brought it up, or Sylvia brought it up, is like, let's have a competition among the commissioners and so.
Here we are.
Because that's.
I'm in, I am so in.
What are we competing?
Most pages a week. Yeah. Those pages, right. There's a minute.
I think it's minutes. We record minutes.
From here or online?
There is an online form.
Bean stack?
My daughter is almost here.
Oh, fine.
Friday.
So is Nurya Rivera, city manager, something?
Go there.
We only clock recreational minutes.
No, you.
So if I'm reading contracts, I'll stay on.
Give you this form with just your name on it that signs it up, or should we go online and do it?
If you want to do it online, that's your, you know, that would make our job easier because we will do it these sheets, we will hand them to somebody who's.
Okay.
Put these people in.
Why don't you want to complete the whole challenge for the?
And then you get another prize.
Kids get a free book for signing up.
My kids come to the book and for the chips, for good chips sponsoring again. Oh, okay. My kids.
Good chips.
Good chips.
And does, does anybody know Bean Stack? Cause there's a, so there are two libraries, a page, some of the. Stack here.
You can sign up. I don't know that it's actually, is it open yet?
Yeah, I signed up a week ago, so, yeah.
June first is the, the official starting. And it's linked right on the main page, and so you can register here.
There's some, uh, like Saturday, I don't know if that's up, this Saturday, like movie stuff. There's a ton of programs. I don't know. I think like Sam Hunt playing this weekend.
Yeah, last weekend.
Or last weekend.
Yeah.
Volunteer to do that. It's a classic.
Cause it's fun.
Yeah.
We do the bike radio, the boat, the bike rodeo in the parking lot with our little kids and a, a safety officer, like Ryan, like teaches him C and T on a bicycle. It's really.
That's great.
The, the, the public libraries haven't always done this. So summer. Again, public libraries about thirty or forty, you know, where the sole intent was to halt summer slide. So children who leave school, especially near the ages, did not do any reading or stuff. And so they found when they started the next grade, they had regressed and back to normal levels and then they took time in schools. So the original impetus for doing summer reading programs was halt summer slide. And I can tell you a personal story and for the two commissioners who are currently on commission, I apologize for repeating it, but. My son, my oldest son was not at the, for two libraries at this, this point that he's not inspired by reading. He read, he knew how to read, he read early. But, um, actually, two years ago now, last year, uh, he came with some friends, um, to sign up for some reading. And he became inspired by the competition, the idea that he thought he might win summer reading, because I didn't, got this way, didn't, but he hadn't been on these prizes. That kid reads, he started reading like two hours, three hours a day. It is his, after video games, his second, his past, every, every day night. And goes, he and his little brother asked, they asked him, hey, for, um, private, you know, private reading time, where they can actually go into their room, read books of their choice and, uh.
I want that.
Nothing, it had everything to do with coming here with Rowan and Wyatt and the other kids and getting a free book, which was, uh, Roba.
Great. Awesome.
He loved that. And he's just like the up and reading obsessed. Nothing to do with, nothing to do with parenting, everything to do with public institution. Made it seem as if reading is a competition, that he had to record his minutes. It's pretty remarkable. Sign up, compete.
Okay, imaginary gavel.
Yay.
Johnny, who's on your phone? First, I just put it right ahead.